Hello everyone. This is the favorite meeting of the year. And I'm glad we're not having it in January. This is better. So we have a list of topics and you all have the agenda. Should we do a little call? Since we are being filmed. Yeah, let's do it. I'll start it and he'll go right. So Mayor Joe Pender. Sorry, this is not going to be good. Mayor Joe Pender, Mr. Dolly Aaron.
City Councilman, Governor Sean McQuaid.
Mayor Rodriguez, City Council.
Shakeda Yawara, City Council.
Dave Farmcopper, Assistant City Manager, Public Affairs Department.
Public Affairs, Mayor Shosser, Mayor Ross.
Kevin Dogg, State Speaker, Christian.
Jeff Satter, Chief.
Jamie Rock, City Attorney.
Tony Martin, City Attorney, Office.
Mr. Peter, City Attorney.
Harold Morgan, City Attorney.
Senator Sonia Popilus Lewis, Senate District Seventeen, which is wonderful law law to the already in law yet.
And Karen Cormack, State Representative. I think we need to go around getting said by Fox and us. We have a move. So yeah, my history is smart.
So we have Diane Chris, Bay County Leadership Councilwoman. And Marcia Martin is also counsel. She is out of state at the moment, so she obviously won't be able to. So the first thing on our agenda. Here Zach is on the is top concerns for public safety. So Jeff, until Zach comes back. Zach. What do you want us to say? Say something about Zach.
I would more than that.
You have a lot to say.
I think we want to talk about these other.
Yeah.
So why do I?
You don't have to be up.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
So Zach, we are at top concern for public safety. You want to get that?
Sure, that's fair. Thank you very much. So I had sent out a basically just a kind of top three things, legislatively that we were looking forward to 2024, where we work on in 2025, moving forward. Some of the things that directly affected. There's a lot of things that came through the legislature this year that passed affecting public safety and mental health. But one of the big challenges that we're starting to see and really started to see over the last few years is there really is this gap. So what a challenge that grew from a whole like Colorado Department of Services. And it's more, as you say, the mental health cases. They're not in a condition where they're taken up in place with foster homes, faculty parents. And so that challenge typically what we're firing is being dropped off in the hospital. And then the hospital is the caretaker of the child. So Human Services has nowhere to put the child because of the lack of edge or facilities bases. A lot of times what we do is the hospital calls us. We can't take possession of the child because they're going to go back to you. So this really creates a lot of frustration in the hospitals part. Well, unfortunately, I'm sure that is Human Services for Colorado. I can't speak for them, but it seems that we're not talking about the caregivers. We're talking many times, as it's been months. But they're in this facility, they're not still not doing proper care thing. They're trying to figure out what I'm behind falling out of school work. What do those things look like? So really, I think that what I've hoped for my legislature to do in 2025 is if we can implement this, I think that a chance for that reason to widen. Couple of issues that we've got, chief shoppers, investors. I don't know how to set the budget, but we try to push forward particularly in the future. And so this is definitely a gap that we're starting to see. And again, it's even more helpful in the future. So we're seriously, we can get on the address early on. It helps them to continue and get that treatment thing we need to get to. Don't leave them. So the goal is, I don't know if it's funny, or if it's my bets. I'm not really sure the issue, just known for us, when we see what it was, is that there's a lack of space. If it's a new treatment thing, if you're not getting it, it's in the hospital. There will be a lot of that for the nurses. Some type of mental staff, I assume, family fear, counseling. One of the things that we'll tell you that the doctor hasn't done for us, you know, the last one that we did. We had a pilot program for schools, the coordinate score. They call it score now. But Amy used to do that in the hall. It was over our coordinate. And so we decided to put permission inside the schools to work with the school system. And Charlie can address mental health issues that are working there. We did forty-five days, we did it in a school. Because in those forty-five days, it's about two months, you get a given date. Because we're just talking about student. We had one hundred and twenty-five touchpoints. Meaning that we not necessarily done with different kids, but we were in contact with different places, different locations. Twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-five. So no, so this is across just the schools. So if you know what you're saying, the right thing I should say is law. But this is just law law schools. We worked in eighteen different schools that we responded to with this team. Basically, that's our mission. And they tried to do what they called a level two follow-up task. I mean, they're trying to connect resources outside of the school and the school leaders, who are going to be in there. It's something that we can talk to the doctor about. And obviously, we can go through. I think this is a budget issue for them, also a fund position. So we actually got the idea from tops of the house. They actually went over there. There's not a lot in this state right now. But we did go to Colorado, and we did see a need for that. So we'll continue to do that. Once we can't keep them in the school, we can't get them the resources at the home. If you need them to help, that really seems to be a challenge both for community and trying to do that place. Do you want to talk about how many times we're in elementary schools? Yeah, we're actually. I don't have a number. I mean, this was not just our middle schools and our high schools. We were also in elementary schools, which, yeah. So I can start you early, I guess, is the point. Yeah, so we can catch. We did all four, we included middle, high schools, elementary schools. I got right within the same area of school setting in the city. I don't have a company that's certainly related to this school war. We did have contact with, I think it's eighteen different schools. We didn't have that sort of prison dealers or elementary schools. Elder schools, all that sort of stuff, which called not the part. In essence, it was a sack, which is not just the other part of the city. Other issue that I could listen there.
Can I ask you about that? Is it only allowed to ask questions?
You have to stop them first.
Is that why the Dallas School District also has a model like this? Is there a ongoing or is it just a?
No, there is ongoing.
Do they submit on what schools, were they able to extrapolate the success on those kids perhaps being able to stay home, stay good, stay home, might not end up being out of their house in a hospital? Very weird.
So I don't have the answer to that. I happen to sit with a lot of those kind of people. And the director of here, what you're talking about, the programs they take around. And I just took the idea to keep that to myself and said, I, this is a, this is a, we can keep the child in school. And we don't have to go with the old street. Get them the treatment, the little ones. Whether or not, and that helps her to be here and she's trying to start that. We need to clear the heart. It's a, I don't have any data, and I don't know that I can share that with you, per se. But I don't have any of that data that's kind of been affected. I can try to talk to psychologists that we have, the purpose of her. And see if she can give me that.
Well, that's great. That's a great idea. Have you heard of the chain of where the office starts? Certainly, we have treatment beds, but if we can get to those case for the movement. Just what?
Correct, and that is, that's the goal, is try to keep them in their home and in school. But we do know that there are times that there's children. We live with a certain percentage of children. So parents are doing a bit of. So I think that's the key to why I mentioned that we kind of want for internal concerns in different areas, but then also I share. Yeah. Or case maybe have a bad, or maybe like a bad in both. That's the whole idea, why I want to be why you're looking to. Is to keep them out of the justice, to help them. So what Jeff is referring to is, so we, I don't know if there's another program, like a program similar to this. So if you know, it was an effort that we looked to do with school, we adopted for the school. Before I got here, probably four or five years ago. And Dr. Barry, I spoke in one of those teams. So what we do, we actually track all of our students, students, no positive. If you're not classified as law law. We track anything gender based, school video to how it, how it complained with the issue came in. Anything you can think of, or else we'll extract that and we'll talk that. But we worked with senior chaplain, per staff, and also with the judge of the state. So our program, where it fails is we started to build the school system. They're winning straight post eighty-six. We're all in state, we're just, okay, missing a bad six. So the record was due, people in the second shift, you're not to murder in the sixth. It's four. So the rebound program that we have currently because of law law is to pre-. You can come to, let's say, to do something, death, fight. You can make a recovery case in that are, if you do, you go to the state level. Whoever's to cover. So what they're doing is they're asking, living their parents or ask to come to a meeting. It's basically giving a notification of program. They can opt in or opt out of the program. There is work to be done, so you can all want to read that part. But they're just getting the assesses, because we're trying to, you have to, she's going to be psychologically assess them also. And then they craft a program around what the child is going to be happening in the circle. Gets the doubt, I see too. Sort of court of justice, so we do a lot of that. So it's not like they can't even make decisions on what happens. But they ran in plenty of cases, so have a stack of papers. We had that paper, probably for at least a year and a half. And we're going to expand that outside of our schools, per se, that will control. Having to be further to do the case. If we can correct, the medical decisions, especially prior to individuals getting a record. We need to receive human assistance. This is, this is very much a success. I have done this job all the way, so Jeff, if you want to say, it's in there. Really, that's a dad, daughter. So I'm going to get something. So again, getting them the opportunity, it's work, but it's not a good way to be shaped. But I think you had a question.
Yeah, before I get there. Thank you for letting us have an interactive. Yes, I very appreciate that. Just curious on the reward program, how about how many kids are this, they're working up? They're eighteen or whatever, correct?
Yes, yes.
Do you know how that harms? If you don't have it, just curious.
I know, but that's a topic, we can, we certainly, I may have known here.
Just curious, but my, my main question for you on this idea about what can we do about these kids that are being kept in these facilities? Has, have you talked to the middle health Colorado at all about a niche program? I know they're trying to be more responsive for them. They need to be certainly given them millions and millions of dollars on the help and targeted at youth. Do you like them?
So I think, so I think it's actually just being applied.
I think too.
Yeah, so I think that's the challenge is that when we look to, I guess, the government to see this, those who we have, like, what do you guys have? And we have nothing. We have no place, this, this child came to care.
That's why I was asking about help Colorado, because they sort of manage their areas. They do vendor contracts out before people's escape, you know, vendor and holding. So I, because I'm, I'm happy to make that Colorado. I'll see if they are already looking at this.
That would be, that would be fantastic. I like this up a little wider, it's kind of similar, it's kind of moving. As far as saying this is what we're experiencing. And then if you talk a little bit about how the city legislature perspective.
Yes.
Of the challenges of that. And to your point, they're reliable, they follow, they need to help. And so again, it's trying to figure out what part of the city, what are our offices? It's just, I guess, no place or location.
And then the other piece is, we may have, I don't know, Colorado again, but Senator Martin is on the faculty of Thompson Valley School District. And if you're interested in getting some data about that, to try to get that.
Sounds like a good area to allow. We'd have, I'm sure the public that just got public access, and if you're willing to share the school now, you should be able to kind of, I guess. I'm going to make it good for all of you.
Thank you. This is exactly good. This is exactly what we're looking for, these kind of issues that we can look at on the state.
So I'm going to go over the whole time. So I'll try to move through some of this. So one of the things I had missed in, and I think before I came in, it doesn't seem too sexy. And that was, please, I kind of, there's a lot of good things that are in that. But one of the challenges in the way that it's, you're seeing. It's not really to hold these accountable. I'm sure you do this, city can be able to do the other stuff, but difficult to assist. And so we here, in law law, have, I guess, the same thing where everything was followed. And we did a very large check in the original, because we started the officer going to the trial. We'll use those certain pieces based on the bill. And then the power is given to the plaintiff. And basically kicks it into due process and really suspension of post certification. What, what say that? Because it's a problem, we took it, talk about criminal court case. There's a higher standard of proof that you have to make in this part of the case. For the civil trial, it's basically fifty million dollars. The prime example is probably the winner, they're going to do the civil case. Well, they can make a criminal, he wants to do the civil, in terms of corporate. And so I think what we've done is we've passed this to the civil trial versus really legitimate facts of case. So what, by reclamation, and I would actually, is if we can separate the civil case from post certification, that kicks away the possibility of a cost certification, if always a day. And I don't think you can issue challenges in the post because you, in these cases, you're seriously tied to danger of curse. And then you get the determination, how are you close to have that though? But do it on the merits of the case, looking from a higher standard, or fifty million, five million, nine million, the actual fact. Maybe the case is testimony, but home to a little higher standard. You provide the opportunity to see, to make our student, to be able to, again, assume less of, cities own. City, less of, above every part of law, federal law, case law, everything that happens, you see, should have the opportunity to themselves. Anything other than people who are going to talk people not practice. Anyone else can assume that it's car exit, be able to have the same opportunities to themselves out of fear of losing the officer, post certification. Recently, a long day, I worked on a lease coach, but I worked out last, very original, who could have been this officer. But again, they're doing this to both the teachers, lawyers, doctors, participation. But what we've done is we've passed this program, or this seven penalty piece, to the officer post certification. And I think this change, to create, how can we figure out the right power of us? They have the ability to do exactly what they currently do. Well, obviously, you do not write, say, in such a check, didn't need to broke a law.
And you might as well. Yeah, yeah.
I did not, we have just a few minutes, we didn't. So, but that's been an ongoing conversation. So we're, we have the trouble with the president, the director. You've had that conversation, and he's had that conversation. Again, not looking to, well, that's, you said, you're right. It's just a tweak, it's been several years now. We're starting to see the officers coming in to enter some of quite a few officers and stuff. So we can test, because I'm a loss. And at this house, I think that's a difficult decision from that here to not have an officer post. So that would just be that question, or that request.
Just a puzzle of.
You know, attorneys know that information. They have us over a bar. You know, we can't negotiate, you know, we're not going to jump without an officer's approval.
They figured it out. They're not, loophole, so it's, Reverend Orlick is making an excellent point about when she asked for the attorney general of Watcher. Because he leads legislation that he believes that has been a definite, not only law enforcement, but other areas and to, to modify current state law, just work with this session and that session. Also modification of laws and will brought to his office. If he along with those. Not as they're paying each other, like we can. If, if they, if the attorney general speaks up and says, this should be something we should do. A lot more legislators kind of grow up and feel interested.
Well, look at that. Okay. Would it be advantageous for this council to do like a resolution or some sort of thing like that to add to it so that you can say this, this would be?
I do think that could help, because the liaison is Jeffrey Reister, and he's really good to work with. And I'll have to go back and find how he responded last year when I wrote about the scare day. I had this conversation, so I'm trying. And I told you, this is not in my wheelhouse of bills that I carry, but it's in many other people's wheelhouse. And it does need a really great advocate from the attorney general's office to really get a policy finish line. So yes, we had, even just a letter of support, it doesn't have to be a resolution, that this is a real problem, we were with a specific instance that it happened to our city. You know, we're not going to be flush with cash forever if we keep doing that. And that, that would help me speak for our community, right? So yes, that would be.
It's the same.
One of those widespread.
Oh, oh, I'm not ready for that one. But it's the same, it's the same for, for me, I could usually just, judiciary legislators that can't. Because this kind of, they'll go to judiciary, so that's not. I'm concerned about being.
It's not, it's not?
Yeah.
I'll keep going.
If you did a letter of. Yeah, we see the upper video, Jeff. Yes, yeah. It's happened on the same part.
So I guess the question is to Harold. Mayor, what, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, why don't we just, at the next council meeting, bring it up as a motion? And because we've heard it, we know what it's about, and it should be a good discussion.
So what's the last name of Jeffrey? Jeffrey Reister, our attorney, so if we have an issue like this, we don't just ask the attorney general. We have channels that we work through, and Jeffrey is our channel. Okay, great. Do you have a?
I have one more thing. I'll go very quickly, sorry if you have to take it to the side. Let's be point one of those seven weapons possession differences, correct? And one of the things that was talked about, the legislature was such, it greatly really been manufactured that's in seven distribution of drugs. And so we, once you're going to do that, you know, it's. You already know this, but I say it, it does involve subject. In law law, two, three weeks ago, we had two groups of individuals chilling each other. And they actually had a homicide. So again, you see these things happen. And so the court of law, we continue to, we're kind of meeting this year. It would be something that we can ask, let's say, if we look at these. Okay, we're not talking about, we're just sitting there, what we're talking about is we're doing that. Maybe back inside. There was a little intersection, there was a change on the wall, and we were trying to, we asked, we were trying to. It's one of the challenges we're trying to help with, it's great that we have some of these, but it's a challenge. So we just really don't know. And we make the call, but I don't know if I'm going to be right after I say. So again, try to hold some of these folks accountable, as soon as they change and make the issue more clear by sound cross. If you really want, welcome to the bookroom and ask. Just to piggyback on that, just one of the things that I have had to say, I mean, one of the challenges of the year is perhaps the most awesome for you, the juvenile offense. I really doubt the issue with that one, because this is new. Not suggesting we go back to that, because we're pretty capable of charging. But we do have an issue here. And I would tell you that we've got a video of one of the homicides. The argument that we're standing by our, pointing at the city, I mean, the council is seeing that. It was on YouTube, it was no, it wasn't on the scene. We actually reached out to their parents through the Children's Services and said, hey, we want to meet with you. Not police, but we want to meet with you as a city law officer, sometimes you know. He had his partner, he was zero. Roughly looked at to see what issues they were. It really didn't seem to have any heartaches of the child running out, running into the fire. And so this, we're starting to see kids who were, who tried to kill. And it seems to be an issue that goes to the child of law, it's a child of law. There really needs to be some high level of people in the firearms. Again, starting to hold adults, you know, they're probably fired up. You start looking at, there, that's what we're starting to see. Your order showed up, the way it could have been fired at the right, is now I'm kind of wondering why you shoot. Now, I'm not intent to shoot you, but I'm going to shoot your car, I'm going to shoot your house. And we're starting to see that become a significant issue across the country. Mayor, I will just close on these three things real quick. Thank you for, for allowing me to, the bill for murder suspects to not fail, but going to the numbers and the number. Judges are telling the court, judges, because they're here to set high standards of laws, so those individuals should stay in jail. But based on the Supreme Court ruling earlier last year, then last year, we appreciate you taking that after the numbers. Thank that. I also appreciate, luckily, we did collectively to see this bill versus containing jails. And initially, that bill was having an influence directly to treatment vessels, which may or may not be available. But it really affected some of the agencies in Southern Colorado, Eastern Colorado, where those hospitals are going to be in Colorado, okay? It still may not be talking to the citizens for that. Being able to hold them, to be able to go out of jail, get things calmed down, so that you can get them transferred to the appropriate. Thank you for that. And then last, I would like to thank you very much for the dispatch, for the backside, first response, that is huge for them. And Representative Coleman, thank you very much. And we think that was set aside for the murder, I think, in twenty-four, twenty sixteen, a lot of this conflict. We're willing to protect those mothers. There were some challenges with that bill, but I appreciate that what we're able to do is, it was a holding back to the pay division, which under this constitution, we're going to add it. And really, that bill really needs to be checked and reviewed that. So thank you very much for listening and working with us to address.
It's important, so thanks, yeah.
So, yes.
Really. Just a quick, piggyback on the distribution of drugs and how it goes together with guns. The latest Supreme Court case, Rahimi, actually now has called into question because the Supreme Court ruled that if you had a conviction for the last month, you cannot, in the states that pass that. The problem is, it's also raised the issue about drug turkeys and having those. And the Supreme Court has already said they are going to bring it up in for twenty twenty-five. So the reason why I'm telling you that is because I run the red lightless professional bill every year. And we were looking at this exact form, but what happens is when we get to the capital, people are like, why should you do that now? And the Supreme Court is going to now, but going this next term. So just know that that may put a little bit of a damp on the decision, waiting to see what it's. So for Paul to, and then the discussion, I want to go on this one. Well, you can kind of see which direction, like, how this happens all.
We did, in New York, right there, the law changed, and we're very hard on it. But I think the idea is to keep this up for, because we do see.
I agree.
We do see, yeah, and we, of course, I do, our shooting, our homicides. and, you know, it's just something that you shouldn't, that's at least on the table for a conversation issue. Lifted by that, it's great.
Great conversation and interaction as far as what's happening. So thank you very much. Next thing on the agenda is a discussion of the grants that the Sees recently made state. Like every jurisdiction, we work with one housing transportation education and land use, but we don't have the dollars. We need help from the state. So you have a few of the of the grants, and I don't know how we want to do this. Fair point, I thought I would just point out a couple, but what we're interested in was asking is about particularly council priorities around housing, transportation, and development, early care and education. If you look, probably half of these grants are probably state grants, so yes, most definitely. But there are also ones around water efficiency and loss testing. There are ones for early education as well as transportation. And so we really appreciate all of the different grants, of course, and wanted to take people to, but haven't benefited from those grants programs in the last. Harold, do you want to speak to any of these, even specifically areas that you're working like LHA or housing general, transportation, or our, like I said?
Yeah, so I think, well, there's a few, there's a few pieces. So not last year, but the year before, we're just using the first, I just came out of the property on three. And we, when we said it was huge, 1.7 million dollars that we used to purchase the property adjacent to hospital, we already purchased the corporal housing property. And so we're at the point now where we're going through the entitlement process, and we're going to build 185 four cell homes, of which 55 of those will be permanently de-restricted at affordable capital day. So that's going to be below 80% A and Y. And then the remaining will be attainable homes, and those will have a rolling de-restriction that also looks at the time. And those will all be under 120% A and Y qualified. We are actively looking for traditional state support on that project, because in order to get it done, the labor is obviously about the land, we look at the pro forma, there's still a gap in that project. And so to keep it moving, we worked, we talked to the council there, we're going to have to put in an additional 6 million of our corporal housing funds in order to attain housing funds over the next three years to get that project done. We're still applying for grants on this because if we can get grants and not utilize the funds in our corporal tangible housing fund, we can turn that project. So we're trying to balance that. What's not in this is Department of Housing, we've really worked with this over the last few years. So Longmont was unique in that we've had three consecutive years in a row, we've had selection of DOH and like that. So we just have to ramp up the increase too. We are, we're finishing up a second, which is 55 permanent, 40,000 units, and we're starting the lease-up process now. And then at the end of this month, we're hopefully closing on 10, which is 88-ish, I forget the number exactly, family, affordable family housing. So that's going to be one, two, three, four bedrooms with permanent shop near center to partner the process. So we have, so the state's really helped us there. It's not on this list because it's a different company switch. But I think as you just generally look at housing and where we're moving, you know, really looking at utilizing property on one, two, three months. And we're moving around on some other projects, trying to figure out how it works. We have one project, it's in the middle of the House of Thorings, which is an interesting program, to say the least. You know, it applies to tax exemption from the state, but it sort of moves around and how you handle affordable housing and in special limited partnerships or local jurisdictions can negotiate fee in order to get the tax exemption to offset the impacts of policy property tax. And so it sort of bypasses that. The project we're working on, we're able to negotiate it, but it's created a cost-relation in the housing program because they did it that way. But they also need local municipality support where to move forward. So the developer was willing to do it. It's interesting as to whether or not the other than housing authorities are willing to auto develop or go forward. So we're looking at some other options, but I get what they're trying to do, but by applying that property exemption, this house takes in through the local jurisdiction, creates local challenges. So we've got a lot of housing work going on, and we have four projects, I think we're talking about, I can mention everything that they have in terms of housing. So, you know, we're at, I think Molly and I get the numbers, 500-ish, including Kristen, units in the next three, four years, 4,500 units. And a big part is four cell, which is, you know, 195 four cell units. All attainable loads, Jeffrey has seen that in the state. So we kind of grant some housing together.
What is the name of those two properties that's next to the hospital?
So right now, it's called, it was called Project Mustang. And that's because that was a code name for Crossville that came in.
Okay.
We've now changed it to Housepad because we haven't been able to think of a good name. So it's going to have a different name.
The question around Housepad is, Longmont did such a good job, but only fields are 15. And that was a big partnership, a variety of incorporated, Angola, Chappa, all these are, are those opportunities still available now? Is that something that?
They're still available. And so everything that we're building, so unlike other housing authorities, and frankly, I don't know how much you know, the city of Longmont is absorbing along my housing board. So, but we're still separate in structure, the houseset and the housing board. They still perform some construction. What happens when you self-perform is it actually reduces your capacity to have the units in need. So every project that I talk about is in partnership with the private developer, state agencies, our corporal housing funds. And so there are a lot of people out there seeking to do this. And it's interesting today, we have requests coming in on regular, but since now that we've seen what we've been able to do, I think the councils are also said to us, be judicious in making sure you're getting the fees that were created under our housing need and health. So it's really kind of dated for the process.
I guess part of my curiosity is because I work actually with corporate partners, you know, you had, what's the parent companies? At Edna, at Edna CBS, which I found fascinating to see, and I was wondering, if those ones, if you're still, I don't know, corporate partners are willing to do that. Because we can certainly, as being state representatives, we can have an opiece to some companies saying, hey, we did this for, and they're, yeah, so I just sit down with those kind of things, we're just still.
There are some, but there are some examples of, I think it depends on where their employees are located and and what they're trying to solve. So, you know, one of the interesting pieces that I came across last week, and this is related to the project that's looking at. So you can utilize rent bonds and large debt fees to build a facility, and you use the building itself or the housing as equity. The problem is, you still haven't had the 1.2, 1.3 debt ratio, which for our perspective is a challenge. And we can try to figure it out. What I ran across is, you can go to these corporate partners, and they actually secure their debt by giving you capacity to their, but to their houses, to their equity positions. And so we're trying to understand what that means, tax liability, attractive, and if it falls into an immeasurable or an opportunity zone, there may be more tax benefits. But it's a way to allow us to leverage and not necessarily have that on clothes. So we're trying to figure out.
Can I ask one more housing question? So we did, we were in the past, House Bill 175, that actually was one of those on our response. It was vetoed last year. We made some adjustments to it. Basically, what the bill does is it gives a right of first refusal to a local government if there is a multi-unit building with certain qualifications, that local government could actually be basically the first chance of purchasing it to convert it to affordable housing. This is going to be helpful, we were hoping this would be very helpful to you, what you look forward to in the projects. Have you talked about in the volus, is there something that you could look at with it? Just about it's on the list, it's like very last moment, so.
I think it goes back to what I was talking about, this project, if you actually have the stuff, Jeff has the funds to be able to purchase it and be able to issue debt and through that process. And so I think, at least from the Longmont Housing Board's perspective, and each of our housing community investment, being able to do that in terms of letting that pass is difficult. And if, you know, if you're selling your debt, then you have to go to those. And so taking it out, so when it presents itself as functional, it's a little bit more difficult. Part of why this other project that I talked about made sense, and we can get that coverage worked out, is is that when you get about your seven and a half projects, and it starts spinning off fair amount of money, your ability to activate in that project, which then the equity can come in and be the coverage for the debt, then over time, it'll probably be that easier, but I think just having the financial capacity now is a little bit more difficult. But it's an option, because in most cases, when we enter into these biotech projects, you're having to negotiate the right of first refusal. And so it makes negotiations a little bit more difficult. Well, if that's already required, then let us negotiate other clothes, when we're a little bit more firm on other things.
Now, isn't there an issue around that I did, gives some sort of tax benefit to folks that have their buildings, guys, that they're vacant, they also, so if they're getting that larger benefit from sitting there vacant, than it would be from selling it, because now if you can't get it leased, then they, you know, the logic of it is to sell it, so if you're not lucky, you might have, you put it in something else, but the financial debt, so the building that's sitting there vacant, and it's somehow in the bright scheme of things, the financial scheme is profitable to do that. So now we have that that issue to tackle. I think that's going to be something that I don't want to do yet, in my opinion.
That's, Sean, you're absolutely right. And it's, that's, that issue of buildings sitting there vacant, and homeowners realizing that they can sell it, what's what has been happening is venture capitalists in mind. And then they use, they take that loss, and they use it to offset their other tax rates. But by doing 1175, that actually gives the original owners a chance to come to you first, come to Longmont first, before they go to the venture capitalists. They don't lose any money because they still have to pay, you, all the same, pay.
If you pay market value.
You pay market value, exactly. But this is to redesign us to try to make that stop before the venture capitalists come in, and then they still have problems, and they don't have housing.
So the value to this is, I think, comes with it. So when we purchase a property for affordable housing and tangible housing, it allows you to actually negotiate with the owner, because then you can talk to them about what their tax implications are going to be. So both of those projects, we actually negotiated a sub-market rate for the land, because the balance and that is a donation to the city, so then it's telling them, manage your tax implications. And I think a lot of times, you say this, people don't think, come at us, but it's, do you think it helps us to be on a cooperative competition?
Yeah, because now they have, because of those, at least with those problems, you need to have you know first.
So we, question for 1175, and it probably was working with tax credits, because of course, housing is going to be sold at market value, but if that doesn't work for us, and if we can't afford to pay market value, then what's the point? But is there any kind of incentive to, if they go below a certain percentage of market value, then tax credits are offered to the owner?
I mean, that's exactly, that's exactly what Harold was saying. This bill will now require for these buildings are called into this criteria, those are those have to let you know first. And so that's where they're going to have.
Those are the things.
Exactly.
Okay, so then we could go out with pensioned for income, so we could put our beginning yield, and right, could allow us to go a little further, develop a part. And then we do the same arrangement that they, they bring their action to pay, facilitate housing.
And it does not have to go through a long, a housing authority, it can just be the local government itself, which is fucking great.
I want another question. I appreciate that you're looking to also develop and build housing to be purchased in those categories, and if those future homeowners, that is the way to get people to move forwards instead of traveling forward. Are you working with an envisioning and planning, supporting some of our local gangs, that those folks can, that they'll already be in a kind of relationship being built for referrals to gangs that will understand this new homeownership, these folks?
We're working on that now. And so we've had, so hey, you're probably going to need about five days to be in in buying and living for that number of units. And so typically, when you come into a person, the bank, because construction loan, kind of the developer, they always want to be part of that. We had one unsolicited proposal, that is really intriguing to us in terms of negotiating down with these, who we pay when you go to purchase a home, they also have access to federal loan bank, which is a federal agency, but it's, and they do down payment assistance that can come in and assist in that endeavor. So we're starting that process now. Obviously, we're looking at this list that offered, probably looking at, our few specific regulators, that we want people to participate in, and there's a few things at play with This this project is tough, because even on the construction, on the construction levy component of this, you back up a little bit. So the developer agreed to have a fixed amount of return in the project. We actually, looking at the construction loan, we had to push that up a little bit, because when you look at almost a third of units being permanently for, there's an characteristic on the construction loan side, because of the challenges in keeping people qualified all the way through purchase. So that's why we had to step in and add additional funding to this. What's important is, once you get individuals interested in, is you have, it can be our relationship with the builder and the people that are selling it. with the builder and the people that are selling it, the lenders that are in play, and the city supporting this because you really have to stay very close to individuals as they're moving through it, especially once they get qualified. We all know, you go buy a house, one of the first things they tell us is don't buy your car. Don't make any big purchases, once you're qualified, you're using the dough. And then what we saw in other areas of the mission when we tried it was, that was a significant headwind because so many people were dropping out because they were doing that. And having a team that had sort of a locker to hit with each other and working with the individuals to ensure from the point of go into contract qualification, when you get to close it, they're ready to go because part of the performance to get it to work, you have to be, they have to really narrow the carrier costs on this project. And so, you know, we have a lot of companies carrying cost to each other, so they have to be able to go. And so that's what we're working on.
So the other thing I agree with these grant discussions was transportation and economic development in the past year. We had a development, we think you kind of got that, but Costco was our biggest economic development project. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, last year, you know, we had a pretty good run. One area that you see by a larger, it's only a smaller, yeah, two smaller groups. But in terms of local revenue, Costco was significant in many ways because we're now starting to see that spin. We do, it's going to occur, and so in terms of other groups that are wanting to come in just because they located. Costco is one of probably, and companies retail, but can redefine trade area. And so we're happy to see that.
And with transportation, you're probably very aware of, that we actually do a little bit of this draft board, that we are hopefully working very hard at RTB. It's a, it's a challenge, for sure. Yes, for sure. But I think that with our density and with our, we're actually going to be working with the governor, but we don't see the way. Getting it all together. So plans for next year, like the healthy transportation in land use?
Mary, this is actually Gerald's question. And this is really for our legislators around, you know, we've obviously seen teens and adults who last couple years, we're around transportation land use, at least pretty soon more than I said. Well, I know, we didn't, we weren't able to incorporate a grant program and initiatives and basically giving incentives for ABUs and incorporated. Now, that doesn't affect your income as much, but there are the incorporated areas right outside Longmont of folks that really want to improve, or have the ability to do ABUs and incorporated. The governor has indicated that he'd be willing to be behind that. So it's supposed to be included in the bill 213, a controversial bill from the previous session. That bill would go through, a lot of negotiations, so it could be more ABU. But this one, I know that will come up again. That's the only housing-related one that I know, other than just more working with municipalities or grants. We go for those. Certainly, the head, every head of housing, Greta DiCapretta, is really making changes and really doing a lot there. So I think she's really wants, as a former city council person, she wants to work on municipal. So I'm hopeful that she'll bring that on to the table.
I'm curious about this 1.5 million weight grant, starting to spend out. What is that, CDOC, same thing?
It's a budget. You have to have the grant.
And it's going to connect here and there.
No, it's going to connect out east here, up to Barbara Conne, so it's a kind of, she does, I mean, that 1.5 million of, you know, a much larger apartment as a component of a grant. So we're working, apparently, the design is 100% completed, and we're just working to, we're working with the property on the last leg of that project.
This is actually a, you know, is it, yes?
And this is more than that. We're having some negotiating issues.
A little bit nice connection again. Relay connection.
Yeah, no, it's on the agenda, it's core asset obligations. They want to have supply of our property. So that's on the agenda. I think generally, if I could jump in on the transportation piece. So, you know, we, we look at, we've had a lot of conversations about people, and we'll, we'll, we'll get into housing, transportation, and then we just have, as the name is strong, that's in our land use code. So a lot of things, people work less on the bottom of this legislation with land use code. You know, we're sitting back here, going, man, it's hard, and we're tired, I mean, the challenges are probably huge. And, but all of that's in our land development code in terms of how we can move forward. I do appreciate the feedbacks on the A U and HOAs because we were definitely seeing there are segments of our community that was being impacted more than others because they were the places that couldn't open in because they didn't necessarily have that place. We'll see what happens over time, and it'll be good. But, so we look at it as a system. So when you, when you think about the projects that I talked about, all of them are adjacent to the transportation system. Obviously, I think both of them are train.
I wasn't committed.
So you're on the train. And so when we look at the development around First Mate in terms of training, transfer oriented development, you can build, I call Phil the rainmaker because he can bring cracks in and body like crazy. But, you know, the work we're doing on the public product partnerships on the transit station, that's moving at its speed. So Johnny and her team have been acquiring land and moving forward, and really getting housing associated with the transit station. The other project I mentioned, we're doing around, is in the T R D area as well. But all the others are near transit route. And we also have our market authority and their grant process for, I can't remember what it's called.
It's a partnership.
Partnership grant on creative ways to get first granted. And so Johnny and her team have also been involved in selecting a micro-traffic partner. Congressman Hughes gives a million dollars for that. I think they're nearing the end of that selection process.
We are, you can't speak about it then.
But I think, I think our hope is that September-ish.
Yeah, we're like optimistic about September and September.
So, so we'll have some micro-traffic. So really now, I mean, I must say, this is a break, it doesn't matter if it's or everyone in the community, this is really that last mile, attaching to it, getting folks across. And so all of that is built in in terms of how we look at housing and our broader community system. And the good thing is, is that they did intentionally bid the project where other municipalities can piggyback on that bit if they choose to. So, fingers crossed, we're hoping that other municipalities that are adjacent to us start coming in and participating in that because then it solves a broader transportation challenge. And when you think about it, Mayor and I have had a lot of conversations about our range of passing around. It really starts filling the void that exists where there may not be a station on the ground and you can still get to a station without having to drive a personal park and route. So hopefully, in a couple of months, you know, we'll be announcing that, but you won't know.
Could I ask a question down there? You got two different areas about airport grants. I, this is not related to your grant, what's happening at the airport, but in the last two weeks, so one for me, just have you thought of for me to do this? But I've had two constituents in Longmont and Chell about touch and go. And I'm sure this is something that you're all hearing about, and I don't know where I'm going to be in that decision. So what's, what, what? Yeah, I mean, I basically told the, it's not, it's not about the land, or maybe it is about the land, but it's basically the touch and go where they're training and they're touching and they came off. That is a new allowance that the airport manager apparently has just started to do. At least that's what both the residents reach out.
That's, it's a relative information.
Okay. We've always loved touch and goes. And we have had training companies out there trying to do the teaching. Yeah, so FAA is pretty clear, touch and goes for training, that's a longstanding practice. You know, I think probably what constituents in Longmont in particular are seeing is, you know, maybe a higher percentage of folks who are training on Rock Mountain are actually coming to Longmont. Same is true from, you know, people calling from, you know, birthed in and levelled before college. So, you know, you can't control where people are practicing and flying. But certainly, yes, we get our fair share of, to your own house, at the airport, the folks who are, you know, have some consternation about that, but we don't really have any abilities to manage that. That's really. The way it was presented to my office is that this was a relatively new decision from the month manager at Longmont. They didn't, something has changed apparently, in the eyes of these constituents, that touch and go has increased or something. Does this increase the volume, maybe that's?
Well, I think after the situation at Jeffco Airport, that group that was really from the school lobby that's very area that's really improved, that hints, you know, really came out strong about the lead fuels. Then all of a sudden, it's kind of, we finally did residual, I think, effect of people that are, and I think we did have a problem for a while of people, a group that was really out there, you know, watchdogging the noise level for a long time, it kind of fell off. And now we've got down to a new group that's cognitive of it, maybe it's because of lead fuels as well, things like that. In my opinion, I think what, what would be really official out there, somehow we could attract some of these electric plane manufacturers uses as the, as their test site for having more of those types of planes for just, you know, personal use at that airport. And then we probably see the production because of the noise level from electric opposed to gas-powered planes. So somehow we could somehow figure out a way of attracting a business like that to here that ended up making me interested. We're hearing a lot of them saying, yes, about older, having kind of these, people talking about them getting rid of that airport. So that, that might bring in more people to Longmont.
So are you, along these lines, are you, is this becoming more and more that people are interested in? Have you been involved more with either noise or land or anything around airport?
Well, I think it is a misunderstanding on the public's part that we do not control the airport because we own it.
Right.
They think that we have told jurisdiction over it. But once, we only have the news on the ground, as soon as they're off, it's FAA. But to the point that Sean was making, we had a presentation from our managing airport manager, and he is looking at all the technology for the different fuels, but he didn't make an interesting point, which I was aware of, is that not every unleaded fuel will work with every plane. If on their engine, he said, who's making it, what the fuel, lead content is, or?
That's what that bill did pass, that this, that was to drive, was wanting towards to be more of an incentive-based program for some of the funding for airports that will start to encourage movement of those planes that can move toward unleaded fuel. So not sure of the mechanics of how, what's that bill is set up. But it truly is, is that open a door to incentivize airports and pilots in their place to move that direction. So rather than, and I know we worked really hard on the guitars, could that bill? And that's why you're going to be speaking with that constituent later.
Well, the one last thing, or, it's my understanding, the jump plane has like several different patterns that it has to go through, so it doesn't go in the same pattern even everybody kind of takes off for jumping. So it doesn't go over people, in my perspective.
We have suggested, take off landing grounds, but they're suggested.
Depends on the weather.
Yeah, absolutely. There's other pieces, I think to your question, have we been involved in it? Oh, yeah. We actually have, we still have it on the website, all the videos with John. So with noise and planes and other issues, it's always seven, six years ago, I don't know if you know John, but John was at CPHD, he's now CDOC, Department of Government. He worked at Cal at the first Rockwell, and so we hired him in our outside council for aviation, which we're still working with him. If you look at FAA grant insurance case, you'll see him and K R over there. He came into the presentation for the community, videotaped it, so people can know and watch it that answers all of these questions in terms of where we have control and we don't have control. Part of that, we actually did get into the part 16 case with the FAA regarding Mount High and land use. We actually won that case. But in, in all of it, here's simple claims, as the mayor said, once it's in the air, it's under the purview of the FAA, and he moves in, if it's an aviation-related activity, you can't recover it even on the ground. And in some ways, it's actually important to go for cities that own the airport because they can counsel them to do this. They can put some books into people who control land use decisions. Can't own the airport, they can't put it into jurisdictions that have land use authority that don't own the airport. And that's what the fallback provisions from FAA start coming to us.
So when that's a direction the resident on the airport does, she would let the city to liquidate the FAA, to replace their windows to the building.
I have some theories.
Oh, they're all, no.
I'm not understanding, budgetary insurance right now.
So it's, it's going to be an ongoing issue for part of that. But thank you for talking to me.
Of course.
Can we push a little?
Oh, gosh. I will be sending them to the website, for sure.
Great. Are there any other questions about the, the grants and what they were for?
I appreciate the list.
Yes. We appreciate you state.
Keep it coming, if you want.
So we are now at the agenda, the internships are staying very healthy, so we're just students. And council, you're welcome to.
So, yeah, I think I added it on the agenda the night we did have the school board and council meeting like this. And one of the issues that came up is the district does provide internships to students, but there seem to be some legislative restrictions that would, and then Sandy, can you help me, help you remember, what was the specific? specific? It sounded like they were working with private industry and it was a headlet to actually provide the internship.
Yes, I think it was cybersecurity was one of them. But go ahead, yeah. But, yeah, so my understanding that, you know, so this is part of the PTEC program, where the students are at the local dimension, well, four years in it, at the end, they have an internship. And, you know, there were connection pieces to that. One was that several of the companies backed out and actually posting their internships at the end. And so the city stepped in actually, go over here, take those interns from the PTEC program to help the city. But there were also some state legislative rules that said they're prohibitive and having students be kind of on the floor or manufacturing and some of the various. And so they found several businesses that were pulling out of the internship program at the last year. So part of the cybersecurity, I think like.
It's a way for them to, yes, to prohibit it. That's, that's right.
I think we broke the law.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, like, we lost a few months. And I was trying to connect it with, I'll have to go back a little bit, but I think we did worry about it. So I, I was trying to connect it to the I T. I'm, I'm sure what happened after I made that connection.
So.
My, my.
Good follow up.
That would be a good follow up because I think our meeting, well, our meeting was at the end of May. So.
Okay, so maybe, did you contact?
No, I think it was before that.
Before that.
Yeah, so let me, we go back.
I think we would just encourage you to continue that conversation.
Yes.
I think was kind of what came out of our, was that we want to take these students, we're willing to do those internships. There's something that's locked in the private sector or there that.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, from the state level looking at batteries and then from our end, it's really, I think, providing that training for businesses. I had a chance to talk to Scott Cook in the chamber. And that was something we were, we were kind of, we were looking at is how can we, you know, just kind of away those spheres of businesses and really have to understand what the legislation is as well as, you know, the state, as well as other things as far as student engagement in their, in their facility and how to be a, how to be a mentor to, to us. What would that look? So I think there's several pieces, but one of the pieces that.
And that's true. There could be almost a template for the business entity that's wanting to host an internship.
Yes.
It's like a rubric that follow or how you follow up to make sure that that student is, is getting exposure, education. Because many of them may never have.
That's right.
So they're kind of creating like, or getting into the process. But if we have something like that, they can go to, that's something that's concrete.
Yeah, something they can build from.
And that could be something that we handle through the chamber or.
Yep.
That would be, that would be neat. But as far as issues around legislation, if there's some ones off, we have that, everything else.
Yeah, it's a very good thing.
Yes. We, there's a apprenticeship or internship that was around almost every year.
Okay.
So on that same subject, excuse me, are there unions that have internships in?
Cities.
Yes.
And they're gay.
And yours, yeah. I really appreciate it. Yeah, really blocking some of those as well.
Yes.
But that might be with F R C C.
Yes.
I think that's the area we totally forget now, sometimes, because we just talk about training for, for people who do not want to go to college.
And the school district, should we tie that into it with those?
Well, state has, state has new, that's just educational standards, you know, career readiness and, and requirements of it. And that, so this is probably the time to add that aspect of, of, of education. It's part of the career technical center down here at C P C and, and as well as preparation in college. But every high school has some kind of here, the, and the issues of the, every high school has usually some sort of like a, I know Longmont High has its high schools of business and it's a program. And I know that sort of stuff, and, and I think Iowa's pretty, coming on with that too. And I know me, high school does as well. But they all have some sort of career technical student activities. In other words, it's also some sort of training in career readiness. So that's, part of it's a standard that they all have, me and the high school. If we're talking also about, you know, some of the industrial stuff is usually at 16 years old and junior to even get into some of these programs you can't because of that idea of, you know, some of the requirements about safety and things like that.
So secondly, for our agenda, the one thing I want to say that I'm really excited about is that we are having our first ever Fourth of July event that the city is sponsoring. And our innovation center for kids in St. Regan Valley School District, who get innovation center, are going to put on a drone show.
That's a good drone show.
Three. So it's also, some of the rumor has leaked out on socials.
Good.
And it's like on viral. So everybody's pretty excited about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It looks okay, at least from the conference.
Yeah, and it makes us proud, and we're proud of our school district, proud of it. And then Longmont trying to have a different, introduce a different way to celebrate Fourth of July. So hopefully this will.
Yes.
Here tonight, I wonder if one of those ones, I didn't like that.
Oh, no, there is.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to add that to the team and actually yesterday, one of our engineers in Water Base of our mission is a bill for 1344.
Well, is this Julie? I'm wondering, who's, who wrote me? I was going to ask. Julie Grant.
Oh, she's a grant, she's a grant coordinator for us.
Well, we could, we could chat maybe about, and I, I missed the deadline because I was on a lot, actually a lot of trip. And I, I can't remember the number of bills. Is it they studied free infrastructure for waste water management?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, she wrote, I'm sorry to interrupt.
She's amazing.
You finish your thought.
I also wrote you yesterday and she said that 1344 has been put into, is, is an act now at this point. And it's regarding backfill testing, that's what.
Oh, I have seen lots of emails about that just today.
Okay, it sounds good. It sounds like the issue is that the bill requires a plumber licensed.
Plumbers.
Or the person to be licensed whereas before they were not. They had to be licensed before, they just didn't have to be licensed.
A plumber.
And so that's just becoming a problem.
That's the sunset plumbers bill. And you would think that all of those people, yes, I looked it up today because I was. And I thought, how in the world was that missed when this was the plumbers sunset of their practice act? All of the experts involved in bringing forth whatever was going to be a new sunset of the bill, they're right, it's actually the bill. How, yeah, I have no idea.
I listened to the bills back in, I've been chatting about and we all kind of listened to that.
It was all like, you know, the one that said, well, there's, you know, backfill, backflow preventer. I, yeah, anyway, I've gotten others from other jurisdictions. I think we got from Longmont.
I can send a forward you out to this email that.
So now the issue is because the licensed plumber, plumber first required, this is why all those people out wasn't doing it. Now they're not.
They're refusing.
We're not certified.
So what should both should do to put in our, you know, see the innovation and have this certification once if they're all that knowledge.
I don't have nothing.
I didn't, I didn't start on that committee. And then you sponsor this bill. Yeah, I'm sure we go to.
These sunset bills are just.
Yes.
Teen.
Yeah.
So like, how about, please.
Out of letter.
Because I was hoping that the, these emails were being sent to like, they were blast emails. And I'm thinking, well, that person is in Longmont. So hopefully that person will, so please send me.
Please do. And, and out of the, the basic resource, if you have questions, I'm happy to help explain the devices.
Okay, so I did want to ask about this Water Smart grant with the partners.
That's great.
That Julie wrote me about, that they had a meeting today, 10:00 this morning, do you know anything about this? That, and I, I was so excited to hear that Longmont may be looking at doing this, that instead of using, you know, typical rain structure for waste water treatment, especially for temperature and water quality, to utilize wetlands landscape, you know, it's going to be more efficient and less costly over time. And so there was a bill that we just passed that is having CSU and Mortensen Center actually study the feasibility of this across the state. And then I get this, this from Julie Grant, and she had a, I guess, with, there's a, there's a grant about an interior for Water Smart, for the city of Longmont's waste water treatment grant.
Yeah, the great.
So I hope, I hope the city gets the grant. And does that mean there must be way in goodbye?
We're working on it.
Another negotiation. Like, this is exciting because I'm just learning about this and the, can't remember the guy, this scientist that was really promoting this and then was, he gave, gave us a presentation. It's so exciting. So, okay, anyway, I'm wondering how they're going this morning, but.
We're looking for a grant for this.
Yes, yeah.
So that's our agenda. However, now that we have these representatives here, is there anyone else from staff that would like to stay there or anyone? While we've got them cornered?
Yeah.
Or a suggestion for what you need?
It's a small town, you know where it's at.
Do you have any other questions for us?
I just want to thank, I want to thank all of you, but especially like Sandy, because I, I'm constantly writing to Sandy and she answered me unfortunately even on Sunday. Just thank you very much. You're being so responsive. I go, I don't expect you to. I just want to put it out there that I've already, very helpful reception, absolutely keeping us on, you know, up to date with things that you've talked about on Tuesday nights and even, I'll ask her about certain bills. We haven't talked to her, but she responded, let me know that it, you know, okay, that it's not in this room. So I just, you deserve a really important place for me.
I appreciate you asking. And I would like to thank you at sort of your public service, but also Longmont has met, oh my gosh, dozens of times during all of our housing committee meetings that we, Longmont is a champion for all the different types of partnerships in housing, your Adu policy, the things that you're doing for whole of all housing. You, I can't even tell you the real times, the testimony that many of you made is so important to the dealers. So I just want to let you know that you're, you're leading the state when it comes to issues around housing, work with them, testimony, so.
Thank you.
And the first tip you made, Tom.
Thank you for this.
So. We are still looking at our asses, but the caterers are here to pick up everything. So please have some dessert.